City Clerk Gomez, the City Council will return to closed session after the public meeting. City Attorney Dixon, did you have anything to report out?
Mayor Geno Ayo, no, there's nothing to report out.
Thank you. We will begin the meeting in about thirty seconds. Good evening, I would like to call our regular City Council meeting back to order at 7:00 PM. At this time, I would like to ask John Pointer from the American Legion Post 281 to come forward for the invocation, and then we will have Cub Scout Pack 734 come forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Holy Father, we ask you to look down on this meeting and help these elected officials to always seek the truth, make the right decisions that would be for the betterment of the city and its citizens, and ensure its continued greatness. We ask this in your name, amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing. Cub Scout Pack 734, color guard, advance. Please place your hand over your heart. Those in uniform and veteran salute. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two. Audience, you may be seated.
Hey, didn't they do a great job? Yay! Thank you. Thank you for coming to our City Council meeting and starting it off as we give honor to our country and our flag. So, I'd like you to introduce yourselves. Tell us your name, what grade you're in, and what school you go to, okay?
Hi, my name is Brayden, and I go to Community Roots Academy.
Hi, my name is Ravi, I'm in fourth grade, and I go to Commu- Community Roots Academy.
Hi, my name is Turun, and I go to Don Juan Avila Elementary School.
Hi, my name is AJ, and I go to Eliso Viejo Christian School in fourth grade.
Hi, my name is Logan, I'm in fourth grade, and I go to Vandame Academy.
Hi, my name is Leighton, I'm in fourth grade, and I go to Community Roots Academy.
Hi, my name is Zain, I go to Community Roots Academy.
Hey, my name is Preston, and I go to Community Roots Academy in the grade, and I'm in second grade.
I'm in second grade, and I go to Community Roots Academy.
My name is Dave.
My name is Joshua, I am in third grade, and I go to Don Juan Avila Elementary School.
My name is Suzanne, and I am a den leader for Pack 734.
And my name is Carrie, and I am the cub master for Pack 734.
Our leaders, for what you do, for developing the youth in our community, to making them responsible citizens, and for caring about your community and these young men. So, we greatly appreciate it and are happy to give you the mayor's challenge coin. So, I know some of the parent paparazzi is down here already, but maybe there's more who would like to join us for a picture. Okay, there are no other presentations tonight, so we can go back up to the dais. Now, it is the public communications portion of the meeting. Any person wishing to address the City Council will need to complete and present a gold-colored request-to-speak form to the City Clerk. These forms are available on the back counter by the door, and please be aware that there's a time limit of three minutes for each person to speak. To allow equal time for speakers, minutes may not be given to another speaker. You may have another person read your written statement. So, City Clerk Gomez, I have two requests to speak for public communications portion.
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Sandy Rains, please tell us your name and address and speak directly into the microphone.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Sandy Rains, I reside at 18 Pemberton Place. I'm here tonight representing the Laguna Niguel Chamber of Commerce, and I'm sure you won't want to miss out on where the party animals and disco inferno is happening on Saturday night at 6:00 PM at El Niguel Country Club. We're having the mayor's disco ball. This is a fundraiser for the Chamber of Commerce, and we invite you and all of your friends and family to join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. We hope to see all of you there in your bell bottoms and doing your disco dances. Next person is Bill Moorhead.
Mayor, Mayor, Council and staff and residents of Laguna Niguel. My name is Bill Moorhead, and I'm a candidate for Director for the Molten Niguel Water District. I'm a resident of Mission Viejo and former resident of Laguna Niguel.
Please provide your address.
27022 Pressy Autos Drive in Mission Viejo. I'm a California licensed principal water engineer with a master's degree in civil environmental engineering, and have been in the water and wastewater field for forty-two years. I started in the field unplugging sewers, fixing main breaks, ultimately advancing as a water quality lab biologist. I progressed to the top level of licensed water and wastewater operations. I currently hold a management position in water engineering for the largest city in Orange County, the tenth largest in the state of California. These past forty-two years, I have directed efforts towards my profession to help the field prepare for increasing environmental, water, and wastewater challenges regarding water supply, distribution, storage, and wastewater disposal. And I now desire to increase such focus on my community. Currently, Molten Niguel Water District serves six different cities at a rate of eight billion gallons per year. Laguna Niguel receives one hundred percent of its water from Molten Niguel Water District. In South Orange County, agencies are all dependent on each other. We are at a critical point in cooperation between various agencies and districts. Most all must manage common sources of supply, its distribution, and wastewater disposal. This requires increasing attention to the maintenance and management of our infrastructure and the setting of district policies. As a candidate for Director of the Molten Niguel Water District, I have the experience and qualification, and most of all, the passion for water. I'm running on November 6th not to challenge the board or district staff, I'm running to join the board. We have been given great service since the district's inception, and it's critical that this legacy and responsibility be carried forward. I'm running for the Molten Niguel Water District for all the right reasons, to serve Laguna Niguel and the surrounding communities, and it should be noted to show my passion and commitment, I am funding my own campaign. We are fortunate to enjoy clean, reliable water. We can continue to enjoy that if we work together. It can be one instrument of that cooperation. I can be that one instrument of that cooperation. I only ask voters to be informed and spend time to learn about me and the issues, and please vote. This is more at stake than one may realize. With my experience, education, intimate knowledge of the local water issues, you will be well served with me on the Molten Niguel Water District Board. To learn more about me and my positions, please visit my website, mooreheadforwater.com. Water is life, and water is my life. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, public communications is now closed. We will move on to our consent calendar, items one through six. Are there any items that need to be pulled for comments or discussion?
One and three.
Member Lindholm? Okay, Councilmember Lindholm has moved the remainder of the consent calendar. We are pulling items number one and three. It's been seconded by Councilmember Davies. Any other items to be pulled? All in favor of approving the consent calendar?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obstained? Carries. Okay, item number one, the warrants.
Okay, on item number one, I'm recusing myself for any potential perceived conflict of interest on item 1887, and I'll be passing the rest of the items on item number one.
Second.
Okay, the warrant registered has been moved for approval by Councilmember Lindholm, seconded by Councilmember Davies. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obstained? Carries. Okay, consent calendar, item number three. Councilman Minigar?
Yes, on item number three, I just have one comment, is the pulled item number eight, that I made some specific comments with regard to the composition of the Laguna Niguel Military Support Committee, that it should be fair and equitable for all the membership, and I wanted to make sure that it is reflected accordingly. So, there was no mention of my comments there. Thank you very much. With that, I'd like to move it.
Second.
Okay, City Clerk Gomez, did you get the wording that Councilman Minigar would like to see added to the minutes?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, so it's been moved by Councilmember Davies, seconded by...
Moved by.
Oh, moved by Councilman Minigar, seconded by Councilmember Davies. All in favor for approving those minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obstained? Carries. Okay, we are now on to our first discussion item, which is Public Works, item number one, and that is the Saltair Community Permit Parking Request. Public Works Director Scott, can you please provide a staff report?
Good evening, honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. The item before you this evening is a request for implementation of permit parking within the streets of Dunn, Port, Stern, and Stream, located off of Seagland Drive in the Saltair Community. The city initially received a request from these streets in July, at which time the city staff conducted overnight studies and found that the overnight parking occupancy exceeded sixty percent. This information was then brought forward to the Traffic and Transportation Commission, who voted unanimously in August to recommend approval of the permit parking zone. As part of the staff's initial recommendation for approval of the permits, it was also recommended to install red curbs at intersection curb returns and fire hydrants within the neighborhood. Since parking enforcement requests increase significantly once a permit parking zone is installed, a spike in parking violations around curb returns and in front of hydrants can and has occurred in other neighborhoods. Oftentimes, these are inadvertent violations, where motorists were previously parking at these locations and not getting a violation, since calls for enforcement were generally minimal. Added, adding painted red curbs often helps guide the residents to park only where legal parking is permitted. Subsequent to the Traffic Commission meeting, Traffic and Transportation Commission meeting, a number of residents contacted the city to voice their concern about red curbs and submitted a petition with over forty signatures asking to not install the red curbs as recommended. They cited the undesirable aesthetics of red curbs within the neighborhood. Included in your report this evening is an alternative, a wait-and-see approach that would have staff observe the permit parking implementation and any major parking concerns related to intersection safety or complaints, and then bring back a recommendation in six months only if red curbs are found to be warranted. I met with a few of the residents living along Port Street, who've expressed acceptance of this incremental approach to red curb installation. In this scenario, individual red curb requests can be processed on an as-needed basis, rather than blanketly installed throughout the permit parking streets. It is recommended that the City Council provide direction regarding the installation of red curbs on Dunn, Port, Stern, and Stream Streets. It's recommended that the City Council make a finding that parked vehicles from outside the neighborhood substantially interfere with the normal and expected use of the available public street parking. It's also recommended that the City Council approve and authorize staff to develop a permit parking district on Dunn, Port, Stern, and Stream Streets from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. It is recommended to adopt resolution of the City Council of the City of Laguna Niguel establishing a permit parking district on Dunn, Port, Stern, and Stream Street, and establishing a bail amount for permit parking violations on these streets. And lastly, it's recommended that the City Council direct police services to continue to provide parking enforcement as time and personnel permit. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Director Scott. Council, do you have any questions for Director Scott? Okay, we have some requests to speak. Okay, if you have a request-to-speak form, please give it to the City Clerk. Okay, Council, any questions from staff before we move on to public comments? Councilmember Lindholm?
Yes, I have a question. What is the bail amount for permit parking? What does that mean?
That's the amount that the fine would be in the parking ticket.
Is that already established in our city?
I'm going to have to ask Lieutenant Matt McDaniel to please chime in. It's generally included in the city's adopted fee schedule?
That's correct. Our current bail amount for permit parking is thirty-five dollars.
So, basically, we would be following our current practices.
All right. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't astronomical, and that seems fairly reasonable. All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for staff before we move on?
I do have a question for Director Scott. My first question is in reference to, have you consulted CBC Code and Munich Code in reference to the installation of the red curbs? How many feet? Any city as a municipal corporation specifically, explicitly, our city can do without any other measures, without any City Council or Planning Commission or Traffic and Transportation Commission to vote upon it?
Generally speaking, the red curbs are optional. The CBC, the California Vehicle Code, and its current edition prohibits vehicles from parking within fifteen feet of a fire hydrant on either side, as well as within the curb return, which is the definition of an intersection. Adding the red curb just sort of further reinforces and delineates those distances for motorists who are choosing to park near those areas.
So, in our Munich Code, we don't have a specific section that would allow the Director of Public Works, i.e. the city engineer, to make a recommendation to the City Council? I just want to confirm.
The authority of the Public Works Director is sort of like on an emergency-type basis. If I saw a safety concern, I could write a work order and have something installed and report it to the Council at the next available meeting.
Okay, and my final question is in reference to setting any precedent. Have you talked before going to the Traffic and Transportation Commission? Unfortunately, I was not, you know, present at a meeting to ask the same questions from you. Have you checked with Edgar to see that there are no other places within the city, within the city's boundaries, that we have established red curbs similar to this area?
Off the top of my head, I am aware that there are some streets with added red curbs where it's been addressed on a case-by-case basis, where a specific request has come into the neighborhood, from the neighborhood into the city. It was evaluated, went through the process, and it was installed. I can't think off the top of my head of a specific name of a street at this moment, but there are a few, but they are few and far between. As you drive around the city, you drive into the various neighborhoods, the red curbs are not very prevalent within Laguna Niguel.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. A couple of follow-up questions on that. If we, if we decided to go in lieu of red curbs, would we need to put up, or would it be prudent to put up signs that would delineate where people should park, or do we rely on the CBC on that?
There are instances in cities where there's a chronic problem that is being addressed, and instead of red curbs, they'll use signage just as a preference. In this particular situation with these four streets of Dunn, Port, Stern, and Stream, I haven't seen any specific evidence that there's a warranted need for the red curbs. There hasn't been a chronic parking violation problem. There hasn't been an accident history as of yet that would say to staff, this is something that's needing to be addressed in this way.
So, we could probably save the expense of the signs as well, at least initially, and I think you were, one of the proposals was a six-month workout, if I understood, so...
Exactly. So, what I can do, I can, as the permit parking is rolled out and implemented within this neighborhood, I can spend some time to go out and visit the neighborhood from time to time, see how they're parking within, you know, with the new regulations, talk to the police department to find out what kind of complaints and citations they've been issuing, check an accident history, see if there's been any reported accidents, those types of things that would then indicate something was needing to be addressed through the installation of red curbs.
All right, thank you. And the second question was with respect to subparagraph C on the recommendations. It asks us to make a finding of that the parking from outside the neighborhood substantially interferes with the normal and expected use, et cetera. Is that a requirement? Do we have to make that finding, or do we have discretion to implement it without that specific finding?
It's, can be a legal question. I know that...
I wasn't sure if I directed which side of the room, but I started.
Yes, so the way the policy's been implemented in the city in the past is if it reaches a sixty percent, it is considered substantial. I couldn't find that written down anywhere, so I think that that gives us the city some leeway to define what that substantial impact might be, and in this situation, I wanted to make sure that the City Council concurred with that conclusion of staff and of the Traffic Commission and their recommendation.
City Attorney Dixon, did you want to weigh in on that?
Yes, Mayor Geno Ayo, a couple of things. Our ordinance requires that to establish a permit parking area, that there be a finding to the effect that there's parking problems and they substantially interfere with the normal and expected use. We don't have a quantification of that, like sixty or fifty or seventy percent. We have used fifty percent in the past. I don't think it's written down anywhere, at least I've never seen it. But that's what we did on the four, the last three, four parking districts, including the two that are now in litigation, Somerset Point and Sterling Niguel.
So, to reconcile those two points, we can take under advisement the sixty and decide from a legislative opinion about whether or not we believe that substantially interferes, and either adopt the sixty or not adopt the sixty, but otherwise, just decide, I guess.
Absolutely. Like I said, we have no written-down procedure.
That's very helpful, thank you both. And that's all, head, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from Council? Okay, now we will move on to public comments, and then after that, the council members will discuss and then vote. So, first, we have Ron Tredway. Please step up to the microphone, give us your name and address, and speak directly into the microphone, because this is being recorded.
Oh, well, Mayor, Council?
Yes, Ron Tredway, since in Port Street. I heard the recommendation by the Public Works, and I like that, but I am opposed to the opinion of red curbs at radiuses and intersections in our neighborhood. I'm also surprised that this issue had made it this far. This started as a request for residential permit parking. Nothing in the request or the petition we signed mentioned anything about red curbs, which will affect the aesthetic appeal of our neighborhood and the property value. Two city employees subjectively decided on their own to recommend painting curbs red in our neighborhood. At the Traffic Commission meeting, they said the decision was based on safety and a citywide ordinance. When they were asked by the commission who decides where and when curbs are recommended for painting, they answered, "We do." This is not what I would consider due process, and it opens up questions of double standards as to why we have red curbs, and the other ninety-nine point nine percent of the city does not. If it is a safety concern, what was that based on? I am not aware of any safety issues in the neighborhood that I live in, or not aware of any safety assessments done by these two individuals to back their decision. Over seventy percent of the neighborhood wants residential permit parking, as the application showed, and in my opinion, most are opposed to red curbs. If the Traffic Commission had complaints about safety issues or had a safety assessment done that would show a problem, this would be different. If this citywide ordinance was enforced citywide, this would be different, but neither of those things happened. I ask that you deny the recommendation for red curbs for now, and if at a later date someone can produce data showing safety concerns, or the citywide ordinance is enforced citywide, then by all means, readdress this issue then. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tredway. Richard Walters.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here for a twofold reason. Number one, I live at one Port Street, Richard Walters. I've been there since nineteen ninety-one, and I've seen a lot of changes. First and foremost, I'm here to support the permit parking, because it's really gotten to be a bad situation. On the other hand, I am here to support painting the curbs red. I happen to live on a corner. I live on the corner of Port and Dunn. On a nightly basis, there is at least one, if not two, vehicles parked on the curb. Apparently, you didn't see them, but they're parked there almost every night. So, the people coming down to a T-stop, the people that make a right-hand turn cannot see, and there are kids in the neighborhood, a lot of them. Contrary to what you might have heard earlier, there's near misses all the time, and it needs to be considered. In addition to that, the parking on the curbs, which... which is code and illegal right now, is not being enforced. Period. I've called parking enforcement. They come out, they do not ticket the cars. It's a safety hazard. It's not an aesthetics thing for me. I lived there. I've lived there a long while, and it's only a matter of time till someone gets hurt bad. They need to be painted red. I don't believe for one second it's going to deevaluate the property. What's going to deevaluate the property is junk cars sitting on the curbs. You cannot see around. You'd like to drive down sometime, turn, make a right on 1 Port and run into Dunn Street, when there's two cars parked there, you cannot see. You're driving all the way out in the middle of the road to make a right-hand turn. So it's only a matter of time till a car gets hit or kids get hit. And I'd rather avoid that than worry about a few feet of red aesthetics, which I don't believe is going to hurt anything. So I do want them painted red. And I'd appreciate your consideration for that. Once again, safety first. In addition to people parking on those curbs, please bear in mind there's handicapped area for handicapped people to get on at the curbs.
You have twenty seconds.
And strollers and grocery carts. Those people in wheelchairs have nowhere to go. There's an indentation on those curbs for a reason. They're only going to enforce it if it's red. They start writing tickets. That's the only way it's going to happen.
That's your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. Okay, Linda Myers.
Mayor and city council, my name is Linda Myers, and I live at 6 Center Court. And we've been residents there since nineteen ninety, so I am quite familiar with parking issues along the Connector Road, Seaglen. In fact, we were involved with a previous matter that was brought before the city council when we first, years after we first moved in, when there were very large commercial vehicles parking along Seaglen. Anyway, that matter has been resolved, and we were very happy that that happened. And I was very happy also to receive the notification in the mail a couple of days ago about this issue coming before the city council. But that was the first time that I had been made aware of it. So I have thought about it, and, you know, my husband and I have discussed it. Unfortunately, he wasn't able to come tonight. And our main concern is also safety. Safety along Seaglen and the Connector Roads off of Seaglen. And I applaud the community of Saltair for establishing this request to come forward for parking permits and red curbs in their area, and I don't have anything against that. I think that that's very warranted, probably, in their, you know, to support their needs. But I also think that the Palisades community streets of Center Court and Danforth should be given equal consideration because if their parking permit issue was put forward, the impact of that going forward would be that overflow traffic from Seaglen will then end up on Center Court or Danforth or other connector roads off of Seaglen. Another issue that I don't know how it can be addressed is that we've been made aware by talking to policemen in the area along Seaglen that a lot of the problem of parking on Seaglen is caused by more than the legal number of residents living in the apartments along, you know, the community of, that's on Golden Lantern, backing upon Seaglen. And I don't know if there's anything that can be done about that, but if there is any way to enforce the number of residents per apartment, I think that that would help with all the traffic that's parked along Seaglen. And just in general, you know, if the red curb issue along Seaglen and going into the communities, I think that's very important because visibility, when you're a resident pulling out onto Seaglen and you're looking back and forth to try to turn out onto Seaglen, it's very difficult when the cars are parked all the way up, you know, very, very close to the intersections of each corner.
You have five seconds.
Okay, anyway, I just appreciate you giving equal consideration to the additional community of Palisades along Seaglen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Anita Johnson?
Honorable mayor and members of the city council, I live at 22 Center Court, Laguna Niguel. I've lived in the Palisades for just about twenty-three years, and I've never addressed this august body before. But I have called law enforcement more times than I could ever keep a record of regarding parking problems related to Seaglen. People sleeping in their car, people sleeping in motorhomes, people dressing on the street, people using the parkway area, whatever you call that, as a bathroom, finding condoms, alcohol bottles, all kinds of things along there. I happen to agree with the lady before me who says, yes, parking's a real problem for those of us who live in Saltair and in the Palisades. In case you're not aware, there are four streets that go off of Seaglen, Port, Stern, Center Court, and Danforth. Anything you do to keep people from parking on Stern and Port is going to push them to park in the Palisades on Center Court and Danforth. Just within the last month, we had police cars and a fire truck on Center Court because there was a big standoff and hostage situation or whatever going on in the apartment complex. The Palisades applied earlier for permit parking, and it was denied because we don't have enough of an impact from the apartments. I will tell you, we have a heck of an impact from the apartments. I wouldn't dare to walk down Seaglen at night. It is a mess. I also agree that a large part of it is overpopulation of the apartments. This city council, your predecessors, approved those apartments based upon a certain number of parking places that were going to be adequate for the number of apartments there.
You have twenty seconds.
They are exceeding that, and that should not become my problem. I agree, we have shopping carts. Right now, there's a pile of trash on Seaglen that somebody emptied out of their car, like legs of tables. Lieutenant McDaniel, there is no parking enforcement on Center Court. I understand there's a seventy-two-hour rule. I have never seen a ticket given to someone except on Center Court when a neighbor applied. I walk my dogs up Seaglen every day.
That's your time.
There is no enforcement of parking on that street.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you.
Okay, Bill Leslie Fund, or is it Funo?
City Council, Leslie Funo. We live on 24 Center Court, and we've just lived there two years.
Can you please speak directly into the mic so we can hear you?
Yes, we've lived on 24 Center Court, and we've lived there two years. And I can't tell you the number of times at two in the morning we're awoken by somebody pulling up in front of our house, blocking our driveway, getting out of their car, or sitting in their car. In this day and age, it's scary to think of, and I am just all in favor of permit parking.
Thank you. Gary Dumas?
Good evening, council. I'm a mayor. I live at 30 Center Court. And, excuse me, it's my first time.
Well, welcome.
My neighbors are correct. These people go down Center Court mostly forty-five, fifty miles an hour. I've asked the sheriff, said, hey, ticket them. Still, it doesn't get enforced. The parking doesn't get enforced. There's three cars, four cars in front of the house. Excuse me. There's people blocking the driveway. I understand my neighbors. But something has to be done about the speed. Some kid's going to get killed. Not only the parking. Excuse me. A kid just got, a little kid just got missed the other day. Excuse me, there's no enforcement. I would recommend putting a light down there somewhere in between that these guys that are coming through, they're at sixty miles an hour in times, that that camera's going to get you before someone gets killed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dumas. Richard Leader?
I'm Richard Leader. I live at 15 Center Court. You've heard from some of the people on Center Court about the trash, the disgusting things that are happening on Seaglen. So I sympathize with everybody in Saltair. This is a community problem, and I would hate for permit parking then on the surrounding streets to push it to our street. This is not a solution. This is just pushing it down the road. And so I'm thinking, well, for one thing, I've talked to so many people on my street, and we only received notice Saturday, it was mail. It was postmarked Friday, so we didn't have much time to get more people here. But every single person on Center Court, there's thirty-two homes, they're furious and scared, furious and scared, because they know what Saltair, the community, is going through. So the only suggestion I can think of, I know you can't really create more parking spaces, but is this possible? I just submit to the city council, the mayor, everyone, is it possible? Chaparosa, there are no homes that face Chaparosa. That's a street that it wouldn't affect anybody if there was permit parking given to seaside apartments, residents on Chaparosa. I don't know of any safety problems. Usually, there would be a safety problem of, you know, turnaround radius for fire trucks or something like that, some technical problem. Could this be looked into? Other than that, we have to, we will be here within a few months after getting the same parking studies done at night. I read some of the reviews. Something else happened. If there's not enough notice, my question, if we only received it postmarked Friday, received it Saturday, yesterday was a deadline to get notice questions in, is that according to the process that's followed, just a day or so of workdays? If you can answer this when I'm done, I'd appreciate it.
The city council agendas are posted on Friday. They're available in front of City Hall and on the website. And you can also sign up on notify me, and the agendas for any of the, whatever you sign up for will be emailed to you as soon as they're posted.
Yeah, but if something directly affects the surrounding streets, like we received mailed notices, it sounds like there was a requirement for that to be mailed to us. I'm just wondering if that wasn't, definitely not a sufficient time to receive it on a Saturday for a Monday deadline for comments to be sent in. Does anyone know?
City Manager Ridge?
I'm going to ask the public works director. I know that you expanded where you did the noticing for this beyond what was required. I am wondering if this gentleman resides outside of the area where it actually was a requirement and it was a courtesy notice.
I'm on Center Court, 15 Center Court, right next to this Port Stern. I'm just the next street.
I don't know if you have the answer to that or not.
And I have my mail here with a postmark.
A city staff in the public works department did look at the map of the vicinity around the permit parking request and went well beyond any legal requirements for notification to anybody who might possibly be impacted by the issuance of permit parking as a courtesy notice.
Thank you.
One more thing. There was just a technical difficulty here. On the, I looked at the seventy-seventy-one page document that was put online, and I did notice that what they, all the, every single, the document that the residents would sign in favor of permit parking, everyone lists the hours at the request from ten AM to six AM. Clearly a typo, but everyone repeated the same thing. Now, the mayor's, the resolution in front of the mayor is not ten AM to six AM, it's ten PM to six AM. Is that technicality something that will at least delay us? Get those surveys, or those questionnaires rewritten for the residents to sign? It's clearly, you look at every, not one page, every page. In fact, one looked like it was typed over, and it was even a big space between the one and the zero for ten AM to six AM.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Leaders. That's his time. Okay, Bob Brassmussen?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Is it possible to put up the vicinity map once again as a talking point? I received the notification of this meeting this evening, as Rich mentioned, just a few days ago. But I did have the opportunity to go through all the seventy-one pages of the document. And what I was extremely interested in was the Traffic and Transportation Commission's review in the spirit of the petition itself. Basically, it stated that there's an allowance for six, I'm sorry, five hundred and ninety-nine units in Sea Point, I'm sorry, Sea, help me out here.
Seaside.
Seaside, I'm sorry. In the Seaside community, which basically, they have a two-car allowance. Well, that adds up to about eleven hundred and ninety-eight cars. Interestingly, though, the Saltair review, if you will, that they performed really only focused on Saltair, and it also focused on only Seaglen. And so if you happen to go to the attachment D, which is their, and they did an overnight survey on several different evenings, and you'll notice that in that review, both Saltair establishment and/or community, and also Seaglen basically had almost a hundred percent population or capacity of cars. What it didn't take into consideration, however, was the amount of cars that always park on Sweet Metal at night, the cars that park on Sweet Metal across Golden Lantern for Seaside. They don't take into consideration the cars that are in the commercial parking center at night for Seaside. And they also don't take into consideration cars on Center Court, Danforth, and/or Chaparosa. So when you come back to the review itself, basically what it's saying is, hey, we're severely impacted, and they definitely are. I'm not here to challenge Saltair's review or their decision to pursue permitting. I'm here to say there's a little bit more to the story than what we're seeing in just the Saltair review. If we were to look at just what the review looked at, basically, Seaside is overparking by about, I believe it was two hundred and eighteen cars. Seaglen's capacity is two hundred and thirty-five. Well, if you add in all the cars that are on Seaglen, almost a hundred and thirty-five. Well, if you add in all the cars that are on Seaglen, almost a hundred percent at night, plus the roughly sixty that are in Saltair, that add up all the other cars in the community that are coming out of the apartment complex into this bound, it's a finite neighborhood of parking. The ramifications of going to permit parking in Saltair is basically you're not giving up sixty parking spaces as there is a code or a law or something in the study that said, oh, we're not violating that. But the reality of it is, you're giving, you're taking away the opportunity for sixty parking stalls to those people that have been depending on those stalls to park their cars in the evening. So where are they gonna go?
That's your time.
If you look at the vicinity map...
Thank you, Mr. Brassmussen.
Thank you.
Okay, City Clerk Gomez, any additional gold slips?
No, Mayor, there are no more cards.
Okay, so Public Communications for this agenda item is now closed. Any council discussion? Okay, no discussion? Okay, Councilmember Davies.
Thank you.
I was waiting for you.
Thank you. I can tell you, I've been on Traffic and Transportation going on six years now, and parking is an issue across the city. You know, if you look back in the history, single-family homes, apartments, they were all basically made for two to three cars. And over the years, recession, cost of living, kids are going to college, coming back, staying with the parents. You have additional cars in the single-family homes as well. I know a lot of them that have five or six cars, so they're taking up the street. The apartments, they're allowed through ADA as well. I believe you can have, and I don't know if you're familiar with this, but it might be up to seven people per two bedrooms, and maybe even nine for three bedrooms. But it's, there is a point that, so when you think there's a lot of people in there, through ADA, they're allowed to have that many. The bottom line is, the problem is across the table. So I just say, when you do look at this, you know, saying these people are this, I think you need to be, you know, respectful that this is a problem that we see going no matter where you live. With that said, I look at the red zone, and I understand aesthetics, but I also understand safety, and safety comes first. I can tell you, one of the places we had it done, that was brought to my attention by the residents, was off Ranching and Gal between Moulton and La Paz. And the problem was the same thing. You had cars going down Ranching and Gal, and they were, the cars were parking all the way around the curb. So if you were gonna take a curb and someone just came up, you could easily have taken out a child, you could have taken out, you know, it could have been a car accident. And it really was a concern, so that's something, when we did go ahead and extend the red curb around the corner to make sure that it was a safety issue, and I know that the neighbors were happy with that. So I understand aesthetics, but safety comes first to me. And, you know, another thing, we've discussed this in regards to speeding. I know that our police services, you know, are aware of, you know, where there's concerns, and they'll put their patrol out there. But it's also important that those of us that are driving are responsible as well, because there's probably a few in here that have driven quite fast as well, so we need to take responsibility for that as well. In regards to the parking, I do understand, and looks, by looking here, that we do have an overflow. And with that, I would support the recommendations.
Okay. Councilmember Lindholm?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you all for coming tonight and for testifying before us so that we can hear what your concerns are. I do agree with Councilmember Davies. We're having parking issues throughout the city. There are a lot of people who have more than two cars, they're not using their garages to store cars. It's an overall city issue. But in terms of the red curbs, I don't know that you need the red curbs in front of fire hydrants. That seems to make sense, that you're not gonna park there. But I do agree with the corner curbs being painted. That's a line of sight issue for everybody. And if you can't see and you have to pull halfway into the intersection to see around before you can proceed, that's a safety hazard.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Great, thank you very much, Mayor. A few things here, and one, I'd echo the comments. It's surprising, it's surprising how difficult it is to weigh the issues that are brought on these things. Because someone said it, we really don't have the ability to construct new parking. So we are trying to balance very delicate issues amongst people that are, we love them all, and we're trying to do the right thing by everyone. So that sometimes becomes difficult. Two things, one is, there was quite a bit of discussion regarding Center Court and Danforth and the impact that it have on that. I understand your comments. I'm not privy to what came before and the rejection, if there was, of a parking permit. I'm interested in that. I would say that what's before us tonight is not that, which isn't preclusive to what you're talking about. So I don't necessarily mean to eliminate that from my thinking. But as I'm analyzing this, I'm trying to think about, you know, what's in the best interest for the parking district that's before us. And to the extent that that impacts everything else, I think we'll know that. And there are observation points built into this that we'll be looking at it either way. And to the extent that becomes relevant, perhaps your circumstances change and we can move forward some other way. But with respect to the red curb issue, it is a problem, and it creates an ongoing, sort of, if you will, lifetime problem to maintain red curbs and to paint them and to be diligent about painting them. They fade over just a year or two years, and they require to be painted again. They turn from red to purple very quickly, and that's aesthetically not what you want in front of your home. It is typical to not paint the red corners, or the red curbs in neighborhoods, some on the feeder streets and things where you have passing. I have less problem with red curbs being painted on the outside along Seaglen as they turn into Port and Stern as opposed to having them on the interior streets. But I am very mindful of Mr. Walter's comments because I get that. If they're not to be parked there, then part of our initial observation should be to do a period of enforcement, specifically to look at whether people are parking on corners and if that's illegal or not, because they ought not do that. Plus, the other reason for this is to try to eliminate a large number of cars from the neighborhood, I assume, that don't belong there. So I think there's a chance that after the parking permit's installed, that some of those cars may be pulled out of the neighborhood, and you might not have exactly the same issues, you might not have parking on curbs, or corners, excuse me. But if they do, then that's a citable offense, and we can take a look at that. My recommendation would be that we hold off on the red curbs, and I'm okay with the six-month waiting and observation period. But I do think along Seaglen that we either need signs or red curbs, and I would recommend signs to begin with that start that no parking, you should make the turns around the corner, just to stop that from happening. I think that's an obvious one, but I'd hold off on the interior points and go from there. And with that, I think that's all I had, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Minigar?
After reviewing the parking survey and the utilization based on, strictly based on the numbers that I see, I'm in favor of items B, C, D, and E, and keeping item A, which is the installation of red curbs just for a time period, maybe as Mayor Protem Jennings mentioned, maybe four to six months to observe traffic, to observe utilization. And if we have issues in those specific areas, in those specific corners on Don Street, on and on, then it comes back to the city council, it goes back to the Traffic and Transportation Commission, and then ultimately it comes to the city council for the final ratification of the installation of the red curbs. So with that...
Okay, thank you. I concur with Mayor Protem and Councilman Minigar. The red curbs, it's kind of, it's painting a curb red that parking is already illegal in. So I would ask Chief McDaniel if we could be sure to have enforcement there and be giving tickets. Because I really would hate for anyone to think any other place in our city, if the curb's not red, then it's okay to park there. So we really wanna be sure that we have the enforcement taking place and that the laws are being followed, and it's for everybody's protection. With the implementation of the permit parking, it should reduce the numbers of cars in the neighborhood, and that should take some off of the corners where they shouldn't be parked in the first place. And we're gonna have enforcement and ticketing. And, but I think this does need to be reevaluated to make sure that that's happening. So if we come back and review it, say, within six months, to see whether or not it's warranted and if the permit parking district did not take care of that. So is there a motion? Councilmember Davies? Okay, go ahead. Councilmember Davies?
My question, oh, go ahead.
In regards to once, if this passes, once it's implemented, how long does it take to get implemented?
The signs will be installed in the neighborhood in approximately two weeks or so. They'll be bagged initially until there's a courtesy timeframe where people get used to the fact that this is now a new permit parking zone. We'll coordinate with the Sheriff's Department on when exactly the enforcement will begin. I believe there might be a time period for the resolution to take effect that we will wait for, and then ticketing can begin.
Mike, I guess I'm looking when it really will take effect, because I have a problem with six months. That's my concern. I'm fine with making a friendly amendment, but I'd like to see it at least maybe three months from when everyone has a permit, that bag is taken off, so that we can take a look at that.
I would be in agreement with the three months.
I second your friendly amendment.
Let me make sure I understand it, though. Your three months would be that the signs would not be in place for three months, or that they would only be in place for three months? Because my understanding was...
This is about the parking permit?
Three months to evaluate whether or not red curbs are necessary.
Correct.
And the reason I got, and that's fine, I'm good with it. But my, I was concerned because you were talking about taking the bags off the signs, and I think that the signs will be up and enforcement from the get-go.
She said that, they'll have, just a process, they'll have the signs there, they'll be bagged. Once permits, everything's ready to go, then they'll take them. So basically, once the program is up and running, I'd like to make that three months of evaluation.
Okay, that's fair, and I agree with that.
Okay, Councilmember Lindholm?
Yes, thank you. Question for Mayor Protem Jennings. In terms of, you mentioned signs at possible a couple of locations. I'm wondering if you, are you talking about, and I think it makes it really clear to people, if you put a sign in, no parking here to corner. So is that what you were mentioning, because it wasn't a clarity? I'm okay not doing the red curb thing, but I do want line of sight. So what was your suggestion on that?
That was my suggestion. We have two options, as I see it, or three options, really. Put no signs up and just rely on the vehicle code that they can't park that close to the corner. That's obviously being abused based upon the recommendations from the residents tonight. So I really view it as having two options. One is either to paint that curb red and be affirmative about it, and we've got a plan in place to evaluate that. But I think it would also be fair that if we're gonna stop people from parking there, we at least need to have a sign, no parking here to corner.
Okay, I think that clarifies, I can get my bumper right here, and I'm done. If I move further, I'll probably get a ticket, so.
That's right.
Okay, that, I just wanted clarity on that, I'm in agreement with that.
And I, just as a caveat, that does create some internal confusion, because inside the development itself, there won't be those extra signs, or at least under the current plan. But we can also reevaluate that in three months, if we decide that those signs are better. Oversigning things, especially in residential neighborhood, usually has some negative effects on aesthetics and other things. So I'm not immediately in favor of that, but I would like to at least to see what's happening when we get some of the cars out of the neighborhood.
All right, thank you. There's also sign fatigue, when there's signs inside a neighborhood and they aren't being paid attention to, then they're not paid attention to outside the neighborhood, so. Okay, so my understanding is, on item A, the direction that we're giving to staff is a three-month evaluation regarding the red curbs and the placements of the signs as discussed. Is that okay? So is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
So it's been moved by Councilman Minigar, seconded by Councilmember Davies, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Okay, our next item is City Manager, item number one, and that is the replacement of a council appointee to the City CDBG Grant Subcommittee. Deputy City Manager Bell, please provide us with the staff report.
Yes, Mayor and members of the City Council, each year in the fall, the City Grants Committee meets together to discuss grants to various community service and community-based organizations. And the current membership of the committee is Mayor Genaway and Mayor Protem Jennings. And Mayor Protem Jennings may have a conflict, and if not a true conflict, a perceived conflict. And Councilmember Lori Davies has volunteered to step up and take his place on the committee. And that is the recommendation tonight. The committee meets on September twenty-fourth to evaluate the grant applications that have been received, and will have a recommendation for the entire city council to vote on in October.
Thank you. So can I have a motion to appoint Councilmember Davies to replace Mayor Protem Jennings on the City CDBG Grant Subcommittee?
So moved. I'm glad she's volunteering for this.
And I second the motion.
So it's been moved with gusto by...
Like I should be moving and seconding, so thank you.
Seconded by Councilman Minigar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? No, you've got it, you've got it, Councilmember Davies, okay, thank you.
I say aye and thank you.
So, no, it's a good committee, it is. Okay, so that concludes our discussion items, so we'll move on to other business and council reports. So, and council members, keep in mind, we still need to go back to closed session. Okay, who would like to start with council reports?
I'll be happy to.
Councilmember Davies?
Just want a great report. We had the Get Safe Anti-Bullying Prevention Workshop earlier this month, and it really had a great turnout. We had about forty-five people, forty-five children come, grade six through eighth. Just the feedback from the parents was fantastic, a good time, these kids are getting into school, teaching them what bullying is, you know, social media bullying, what to do to take the oath of being an anti-bully buddy. So if they see someone being bullied, how they can actually report it to a trusted adult. But I tell you, it was really eye-opening, it was great to see these kids come in. And again, Mayor Genaway and myself were part of this. I also wanna thank police services for really helping us get the word out, as well as Parks and Rec. And of course, our trustees helped get that into the schools. So we're planning on doing this in January again. But I wanna thank all the parents for bringing their kids out that night. I really believe that, you know what, we made a difference there. And I also did attend the League of Cities Annual Conference this week, last week, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lindholm?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just briefly, and I know this is under the city manager's purview, but we did have the homeless meeting and shared that with our mayor, and of course, Debbie was there, Debbie Bell, and our police services. And the brochures were distributed, it was great to see the wonderful camaraderie and the stepping up and the communication of all our faith leaders, as well as the service providers, so. But we also need, I think South County Outreach could use additional supplies because they have that flooding, so. Please, but you continue on that, I just wanted to say, I think that was a very important meeting, and I'm glad to be a participant in that.
And the resource, Community Resource Guide is available on the city website.
Yeah, and that's great, I thank you for all the input that we've had from the police, et cetera, at all, not et cetera. And it's good, so anybody who wants that information on the homeless or staying in your home, you can look that up under Resources, under our city website.
Thank you. Councilman Minigar?
I attended Southern California Association of Governments meetings in downtown LA and the Transportation Committee, the Regional Council meeting as well. Just in a nutshell, the CEO of SCAG has resigned effective last week. And Hassan Iktar has served SCAG for almost twenty-three years and ten years as the CEO of the largest MPO in the US, which is comprised of six counties, one hundred and ninety-one cities, which is huge, is the biggest in the country. So it goes without saying that for someone, you know, at the helm of that huge organization with a lot of political fractions and a lot of different preferences, it's a very difficult organization to lead. But the second news is that he has accepted the position of being the CEO for SADAG, which is San Diego Association of Governments in San Diego. But obviously, San Diego County is the only county that is not a part of SCAG's system. And because they wanna set their own rules, they wanna set their own policies and establish their own preferences. And San Diego County comprises almost nineteen cities, so that remains to be seen, what changes we are going to be seeing at SCAG. So with that said, we are waiting for... So with that said, we are waiting for the new RTP, Regional Transportation Plan, to be rolled out for the federal funding that has to go to Washington DC, but within the next couple of months or so, we are going to be discussing all kinds of different priorities for Southern California. In that case, I represent the six South Orange County cities, which is the cities of Dana Point, Alisa Viejo, San Clemente, San Juan Capistrano, and obviously, our beautiful city, and not to forget, city of Laguna Beach as well. So I represent these cities with the priorities for us, basically, what is the best for mobility for, for our cities, for our residents, for our citizens to enjoy, you know, all those fundings that happen to be coming from Washington DC. If they get down to us, then we get our fair share of that in a kind of equitable fashion. So with that, that was the SCAG meeting, and last week, along with my two colleagues, I attended the League of California Cities in Long Beach, and it was the business as usual, so thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Great, thank you, Mayor. With respect to the League of Cities, I was appointed as a voting delegate for you all. Two items came before the General Assembly on Friday, they were both passed, I voted in favor of item number one, which was an item supporting local control by our legislature, and the League made a very emphatic statement, in fact, it was arousing yes vote by everyone there, that local control was very important to all the cities. In a group that often doesn't agree on things, they were definitely in agreement on that. The second one seemed to be a bit more of a split, I voted against it, it ended up passing, but it was an effort to require cities to investigate the use of rodent side that might contain anticoagulants that would impact children. Apparently, some, some things that are used to kill rodents also have anticoagulants in them, and children have gotten hold of them. I thought that that was something that was well-placed for the state and the regional to deal with, but they rather said that they wanted to investigate and have it done at the city level as well, so while I voted against it, it also passed. So with that, those are the only two things before that body, and I'm glad to say that it otherwise went well. I only want to mention something, because I spoke at the Capistrano Unified School District this past Tuesday night, or Monday or Tuesday night, whichever it was, at their board meeting, regarding the incident that occurred at Alisa and Gal High School. That was an incident regarding a game that was played there, that resulted in some allegations by a member of the staff at Santa Ana High School. I don't want to delve into that too much, my, my words are still online, and you can read them if you'd like to, but I just want to let you know that I was speaking on your behalf, and I'm glad to say that both districts have come together and tried to quell that problem, as it should have been quelled, long before it got to where it was, but at least we're at a point now where I think it has substantially passed us, so that is indeed a good thing, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, last Tuesday, after the homeless task force meeting, that evening was the first junior civic workshop of the school year, had a great turnout, it was standing room only for some of the adults in the room, a lot of enthusiastic middle schoolers who were there to learn about, what does a city council and a city manager do, and learn the history of their city as told through the city seal. So thank you, City Manager Ridge, for participating and presenting, and thank you, Deputy City Manager Bell, for preparing our presentation, so we can't do it without your PowerPoints, so thank you very much. But really good turnout from the kids, and these are, again, our middle school students, who are learning what it is to be responsible citizens. And had a senior citizen advisory council meeting, and also a legislative committee meeting, won't go into too much detail there, because I'm keeping it short tonight, because early tomorrow morning, I leave for Washington DC for the White House's Women Mayors of America Conference. But do want to tell you, one of our community partners, South County Outreach, you may or may not have heard, that they had a flood in their facility, which has significantly impacted the food that they distribute to keep, to prevent homelessness. They are one of our organizations that have been working in our community for many years to prevent homelessness, and part of that is the distribution of food. So we are going to be putting a barrel for food collection here in City Hall, we'll start taking collections tomorrow morning, so any of our residents, please just stop by City Hall, this is for non-perishable food only. The most needed items are pasta, rice, peanut butter and jellies, hearty soups, oatmeal, chili, macaroni and cheese, so canned fruit, canned tuna, cereal. But please, think of those people who are on the brink of homelessness, and what your donation can mean to them. And the barrels will be here in City Hall, making it easier for you. So thank you for, in advance, for participating in that, and we will now have other reports from our city managers, and then the City Council will go back into closed session. Chief McDaniel?
Thank you, Mayor. Our shred event is this Saturday, the 22nd, from 7:00 AM till 12:00 PM in the City Hall parking lot. I would encourage folks not to get here before 7:00, in the past, we've had traffic jams, when in reality, this process should take you about 10 minutes, if you come sometime after 7:00. So please, to the citizens, come, get rid of your, your documents that could end up in a identity theft-type situation, we'll shred them right in front of you, you don't even need to get out of your cars, but we'll take up 10 boxes of documents from you, and shred them right in front of you, and you should be out of here in 10 minutes, assuming you come after 7:00 o'clock, that's all I have.
Thank you. Director Erlinson? City Attorney Dixon? Nothing, okay, well, that's good, nothing from the Fire Department. Mr. Morgan? Okay. City Clerk Gomez? Director Giglio?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder that this Friday, September 21st, from 9:00 AM to 12:00, is the annual Senior Expo at Sea Country Senior and Community Center, and participants can take advantage of a variety of vendor booths, free health screenings, free food giveaways, there's going to be live music, so it should be a fun event, but also very valuable information will be given out. Also, this Friday, The Incredibles will be shown at Marina Hills Park at 7:00 PM, and superhero costumes are welcome. And Monday, October 1st, is the mandatory meeting for anyone interested in becoming a monster for the Haunted Trails event. Volunteers have to be 13 years old, and the meeting will be here in the community room at City Hall from 6:30 to 7:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy City Manager Bell?
Just wanted to add that I also attended the League of California Cities meeting last week, and it was very good. I jokingly told our city manager, I came back with a lot more work that I need to do, there's a lot of good ideas that I was able to glean from the conference. And just wanted to introduce our newest city employee, Erin Spradlin, is here tonight. He's a management analyst in the Administration Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Scott?
Nothing to report.
Okay, and City Manager Ridge? Okay. That concludes the public portion of our regular City Council meeting. The City Council will now go back into closed session.